Everyone in J C next to you.
Yes, we did. How are you?
There's no mic.
Thanks. Appreciate it. How are you?
That's a present she got from her grandmother.
She's telling the whole year.
She wants to be a doctor. Good thing about, good thing about. Yes, and you're tired? Right now, there's not a good song that I can remember. Baby Shark, oh, I hate that song, but I'll sing it all night. Yeah. I know why you're here. You're upset when you got out early this morning. Yeah, yeah, you watch that when we got out early. He said, I want to make that burn like paint. That's why you're here. You know each other all the time. We serve together all the time.
So, so, wait, so you're a child.
Yeah.
I just saw Jennifer has a new boss. You know Jennifer works for the city, I said.
Yeah, yeah.
Now they have a new city manager.
Yes, yes.
Come on, let's get him, come on.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to our regular council meeting September nineteen twenty twenty-three, our regular meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Ready, begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members. Thank you. May be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Council member Ross.
Present.
Council member Mann.
Present.
Council member Soto.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
And for the record, Mayor Pratim Samra is here, but he stepped out of the dials.
Thank you. Thank you. Legal, closed session announcements.
No reportable actions at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Moving forward, citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda and items on the agenda. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please state the item number. Members of the members of the public when recognized by the mayor should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. Are there any citizen comments? Good evening. Can you please state your name for the record?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council and public. Great to see you all. I'm here this evening because I would like to convey my desire to settle my legal dispute with the city of Livingston by way of the sealed envelope. I'll provide it in a moment. Through my legal team, over the course of several months, I've been trying to get the information before the decision makers. And I don't know if that actually has happened. I can only deduce by what has not happened that the information hasn't gotten before you all. So I would like to conclude by thanking you for your time and your consideration. And I would like to approach the bench here and provide this to the city clerk. And this is for the entire council and those that you choose to see this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments in the chamber?
Bob Wallace, mayor, council. For those that don't know, I'm the current chair of the planning commission. And I just wanted to get some stuff out there to the public that doesn't normally follow the planning commission. The citizens of Livingston are interested in developments, what's going to be proposed, what's going on. We've had, we've had one opening on the planning commission for quite a while. Now we have two. We need interested citizens. There's got to be some in this city that would be interested. I think a lot of people think the planning commission is run by a bunch of grumpy old men. Well, I'm old, but I try not to be grumpy during the meetings. In the plus years that I've been on the commission, we have had one lady be appointed to the planning commission. Don't know why, but there has one, and I'd like to congratulate her because as of first of October, she's going to be the planning commission vice chair. And I just want the citizens, any Livingston resident, I encourage you, if you might be interested, please apply. Okay? They don't like having two vacancies. They're both alternate commissions commissioners. Alternate commissioners, I have very mixed feelings on. It's kind of a waste. It would take the city code to be adapted to go to seven and change our quorum requirements. But they, one can speak one month, one can speak the other, depending how many regular commissions are meeting or missing. But they can talk, but they can't vote. So they can express their opinions, but they may not have a vote. And I just don't, after as many years on, I just don't think that's fair. I think the city council needs to look at changing that, maybe make our total number seven, change the quota for a quorum. If they can talk, if they can express their comment, their opinions, we're all listening to it, why don't they have a vote? One last thing. Every month in the water bill, we get this form, every month it comes. My problem with it is we're anticipating resolving one, two, three TCP violation by the end of June twenty twenty-one. Well, somebody's fibbing because almost every month we get this back in our water bill. I think the city deserves a more update from the council. What is the status on our wells and with the TCP? Don't tell me it's going to be resolved by the end of year twenty twenty-one because we're all past that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Is there any additional citizen comments in the chamber?
Hello, my name is Julio Valades. I just wanted to come to the city council and thank everyone that was involved in our autism day picnic at Yamato Colony School this Sunday. It was an awesome event that brought families from all over the Central Valley to enjoy a day of free activities for families that have kids with autism. We had a magic show, we had carnival rides, we had clowns, we had a lot of game stations. And thanks to everyone who volunteered, which includes Jackie. Thank you so much for volunteering and doing shaved ice and cotton candy. And the Livingston Police Explorers, Livingston High School FFA students, Livingston High School Hispanic Leadership Club for Mrs. Moran's class, Mr. Moran's wife, and everyone else who volunteered, the police department, the fire department, I think he left. Did he come back? But the police, no, I know you're here. I'm sorry. I'm talking about the fire department. Robert, Mr. Robert Nguyen, he also was there. And it was an awesome event for families with autism. So I really want to thank everyone who helped there. We had a bigger attendance this year. And we're going to, we do that every year here in Livingston. And then we have also done it in Fresno area and Sacramento area. So, and we have taken the kids from Livingston. We bus the kids from Livingston to the other areas to help as well. So I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Moran. Please thank your wife, maybe she's listening. And then everyone else who's not here, Livingston Union School District, Mr. Samora, and all the staff there at the Yamato Colony School. Thank you all.
Thank you. And on my behalf, say thank you to everybody else that was involved behind the scenes. I think it's always something great to be able to have in this community. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there physically. But I was there, we were there on the way there. So just, but we'll be there to continue supporting events like this for our community. Thank you. Any additional citizen comments in the chamber? Anyone on the phone? Okay, hearing none. Moving forward, next we have award presentations and proclamations. Item number one, presentation by Dean Perry, Doug Walker, Greg Lisk, Mackenzie Darko, and Connor Seacrest from Train Technologies, Train Energy Services Company project.
Mayor and council, they were unable to make it tonight due to an illness, so we'll be rescheduling that for the future mayor.
All right. Thank you. And item number two, there's a presentation by Mayor Moran, proclamation recognizing the Fresno Area Hispanic Foundation. And then I will read the first part of it is where City of Livingston proclamation, whereas the city of Livingston, California recognizes the significance of celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, which is observed from September fifteen to October fifteen as a time to honor and highlight the rich cultural contributions of Hispanic and Latino communities in the United States. And whereas the city of Livingston values the importance of diversity, inclusion, and cultural exchange within our local and regional communities, and whereas the Fresno Area Hispanic Foundation, a prominent organization dedicated to promoting Hispanic culture and heritage, has displayed unwavering commitment and dedication to fostering unity, understanding, and cultural appreciation among the diverse communities of the Central Valley. And whereas the Fresno Area Hispanic Foundation has organized and continues to host the Año Fiesta Patrias event in downtown Fresno, a vibrant and engaging celebration that serves as a focal point for recognizing and celebrating the Hispanic heritage, showcasing its traditions, music, dance, and cuisine, and providing an opportunity for people of all backgrounds to come together and learn about the rich Hispanic culture. And whereas the collaboration between the City of Livingston and Fresno Area Hispanic Foundation for Fiesta Patrias has been instrumental in creating bridges of understanding and cultural appreciation between our communities. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Jose E. Moran, and the city, and the Livingston City Council do hereby proclaim our heartfelt appreciation and gratitude to the Fresno Area Hispanic Foundation for their outstanding efforts in organizing and hosting Fiesta Patrias in downtown Fresno in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. We commend the Fresno Area Hispanic Foundation for its dedication to promoting cultural diversity and for creating an environment where the cultural richness of the Hispanic community can be celebrated and shared. Your commitment to fostering unity and celebrating heritage aligns with our core values of the city of Livingston. And we are proud to stand alongside you in this endeavor. As a symbol of our appreciation and support, we hereby extend this proclamation as a testament to the invaluable partnership between the city of Livingston and the Fresno Area Hispanic Foundation. We look forward to continued collaboration, collaboration, and the opportunity to celebrate Hispanic heritage with you in the years to come. And witness whereof, I have here on two semi-hand cause the signal of the city of Livingston to be affixed this nineteenth day of September twenty twenty-three. So thank you, Fresno Area Hispanic Foundation. Next, we have announcements and reports. I'm not sure if Supervisor Rodrigo Espinoza is on the phone. I know that he was heading to a conference. And he said he might, he will be trying to be on the phone and provide a report. Supervisor Rodrigo Espinoza, are you on the phone? Okay, hearing none. We don't have any city staff announcements and reports?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. City manager announcements and reports?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. So we're continuing with the city council members' announcements and reports. Council member Mann?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight outside of, I want to make announcement that the Sweet Potato Festival will be held this September twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and the first at the Max Foster Sports Complex. Shout out to Jackie. Thank you very much. And please, if you're able to, please make out, there's a lot of festivities, a lot of fun. It's normally a great turnout. So if you have, if you have the time, please, please join the group. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have council member Roth.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On nine twelve, I attended the planning commission meeting. Chair Wallace also explained some of the questions I had about the water levels. They were also concerned about the truck parking on B Street. I will get with the city manager on that and find out. They're also concerned if he had a permit yet or not. So we'll get with him and report back. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Soto.
On September 12th, I attended the Children's Summit on my own behalf, because it's very important to understand that as our youth coming up, that we need to provide their help with the education and the guidance through mental health. That was a really big discussion during that summit, and how we need to help with policy and children in our communities and our schools. I also attended the Planning Commission meeting that evening. Thank you Chairman Wallace for bringing that shout out for Renee, for being the woman on the commission, and there is a need for the two alternates. Also, during that Planning Commission, there was a discussion about the roads, and I just wanted to put this out there, that I do recall that on, I believe, September 15th, 2020 council meeting, that Diego Castillo had come to that meeting, and he had made a commitment to the City of Livingston. His, wait, no, the meeting was July 20th, 2021, that he made a commitment to do the improvements and said he could provide the road to the City of Livingston, so you might want to keep that in mind, that was the meeting of July 20th, 2021. On September 11th, I reviewed the webinar for the Cal Cities. On the 14th, I also attended the Cal City Central Valley Divisional Meeting in Lathrop as part of the City Council Policy Development Process. Thank you. I am going to be the voting delegate for the annual conference. Voting shall take place on Friday, this coming Friday, at 8:30, if there are items that are being brought forward from the General Assembly. On this past Thursday, in addition to the Hispanic Latino Heritage Month, we did celebrate, the Merced County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce did award four outstanding women throughout Merced County that have been doing great things within their communities. Those women were Guadalupe Gonzalez, Daisy Perez, Michelle Sandoval, and Martha Armus Kelly. Also, I just want to put a shout out that September 23rd, that will be our, for all of the LHS alumni, that is the all-class reunion taking place at Memorial Park at 3:00 PM. There's also a car show, there's lots of information on social media. But with that, I wanted to share a letter that should have been sent out on behalf of the Alumni Committee. Thank you so much for your contribution to the LHS All Alumni. Your generous contribution will allow LHS All Alumni to provide educational scholarships, support reunions, allocate monetary assistance to classroom projects, grant awards, beautify the LHS campus, and preserve the history and archives of the school. It will advance the interests and welfare of Livingston High School and its students, staff, and alumni while promoting unity and equity, encouraging wolf spirit to honor our shared legacy. This part in the letter doesn't apply, because it was written for the City of Livingston. As a 501(c)(3) organization, your contribution is deductible to the extent of the law, please consult with your tax advisor for your allowable tax deduction, and retain this letter for support. Thank you again for your wonderful contribution, City of Livingston Council for approving the waiver of fees. Sincerely, Maria Soto, Recording Secretary, LHS All Alumni. In addition to that, the Livingston Youth Football and Cheer Organization sent a letter on behalf thanking City Council for their waiving of the fees for the use of Alverness Field as we're using them currently, because it is getting dark. So with that, we are having continued youth sports, and that'll wrap up my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing, sorry. I did have somebody reach out to me in regards to, lost my train of thought. It had to do, oh, okay, I got it. It was in regards to conduct for city council members. Should there be anything, I'm just going to put this out there, because this upcoming is mental health awareness, domestic violence, the month of October, but if there are concerns with any persons within the City of Livingston, our city staff, its admin residents, in regards to city council members, it would, I encourage you to come forward and discuss that with our city manager, it is your right. We have an obligation to look into these matters, so if anybody out there, I'm just putting it out there, that because a citizen was concerned, that if you feel that city council members are not acting in the way that they should, in accordance to their oaths and ethics, that they should be addressed to our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Potem, Samra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, as Councilman Mann stated earlier, next weekend, we have our Sweet Potato Festival. Great event, everybody should attend. Yeah, I said, not this weekend, but the following weekend. Okay, it's the last weekend of the month. So anyway, one of the boards that I serve on for behalf of the city is the mosquito abatement, and boy, we've been busy this year. I'm sure everybody's been talking about a lot of mosquitoes. I have made their request, I made their request that we have extra surveys done around those parts prior to the events, and we'll see if we can get them to spray three days, just to make sure that we hold the mosquitoes in control. We've had, there's been a 20% increase in reported mosquito issues this year from a previous year. And we have another case of West Nile virus in Merced County. We're still doing what to see, I think it might be okay, but we're still trying to get a final confirmation from the Health Department. There was one horse that was infected, the horse had to be put down unfortunately, but that's what we deal with, and through all of our pools and all that, you know, basically, I've been learning a lot about how we have pools at the check, and they put chickens in that area, they check the chickens for West Nile virus, so it is quite a bit of a science. But it's bad this year. So just letting everybody know, if anybody has concerns with mosquitoes, you can go to the mosquito abatement website and request a service in your neighborhood, you can leave your phone number, put your email, they're very responsive, very fast. A few people that I have, that I called on their behalf and filling out a website, within a few days, they gone there and serviced it. So let them know what we can do, and we'll take care of it the best we can. And that's what I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. So this month, we are not going to have, or we didn't have, the MCAG meeting until the month of October, and I also attended part of the Planning Commission meeting last time, and I finished watching it on video, on YouTube. And also, I was able to participate, I was invited by the Fresno Area Hispanic Foundation, and actually, not so long ago, at the end of July, we had our sister city of Sapo Tlanajo, Jalisco, Mexico, came to, a delegation came to visit us, and during that visit, the Fresno Area Foundation was able to connect and share the opportunity for a grant for women to become entrepreneurs, and I was invited to be a witness of the signing of that agreement between the Fresno, the grant from the Fresno Area Foundation to the City of Sapo Tlanajo, Sapo Tlanajo in Jalisco, Mexico, and they were able to provide that grant to women that wanted it to become entrepreneurs, and I think that's great, you know, just giving people less fortunate an opportunity to create something out of nothing, and it's all based on the opportunity to create handmade products that they could import to other countries and be sold. So thank you to the Fresno Area Foundation for the invite, and then again, you know, I cannot, we cannot stop inviting everyone to the Sweet Potato Festival Friday, it's going to be, the focus is going to be on the youth, there's going to be a car show, some skateboards giveaway, or raffle, giveaway. And so, if you're not from the area, you're more than welcome to come and visit us all three days, there's going to be plenty of food and a lot of fun rides, so. That will be on September 29th, the 30th, and October the 1st. And that's it for me at this time.
Jose, excuse me, I'm sorry, may I, one more?
Yes, you go ahead.
So just looking out into the audience, I do see Mr. Julio Valades. So I've, I wanted to ask you, I have been in conversation with our interim City Manager, Christopher, as well as a contracted amusement, Paul Maurer Shows. So with that being said, I just want to ask you if you would like to come forward and help coordinate a 4th of July event? Yeah, well, I want it on record.
Yes, we are working on something, and I have been talking to Paul Maurer Shows as well. Don Maurer called me and was asking who was going to be in charge, whether it's the city to do the contract, or someone else, so we just need to clarify that. And they do want to do a contract soon, otherwise they'll, they have other offers.
Thank you for coming present, I did receive a call from Don as well, so if we could somehow put that into the notes, that we need to move on this before we lose a 4th of July event for this coming 2024. Thank you.
All right, thank you, council. Next, we have the consent agenda. What is your wish? Do you have any questions or a motion for the consent agenda?
I have a quick question in regards to it, I'm going to approve it, but I have a question. In regards to items four to 16. So I do see that those are the approval of the minute meetings, there's about 13 of them. I just wanted to see, I know that Musio was present on the dais and training, but was that, did we come to something with Musio on that?
We are working on coordinating a discussion with him related to what he's able to take on. We haven't been able to coordinate that yet, but it is coming here soon.
Okay, so there are 13, we already in September, so there is quite a few, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, at least 11 more minutes coming, and so if we're not coordinating with him, how are we getting these done?
Councilmember Monica, the deputy city clerk slash executive assistant, has been doing the minutes, council member.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, so that is a lot of work, but we do have a big packet, 13 approved minutes, which go back as far as December 8th, and we are still missing quite a few of them, but thank you for your diligent work in getting those complete and taking over where our elected leadee. Anyways, that was it, that was the only comment I had to make, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? We have a motion on the floor?
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Mayor Potem, and the second by Councilmember Roth. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Excuse me, hold on, can I, I'm going to go out and ask for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone in regards to the consent agenda? Here and none, coming back to the chamber, any public comment in the chamber in regards to this item? Seeing none, coming back to the dais, roll call, please.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Potem, Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have item number 20, discussion of potential action items. Item number 20, resolution approving a contract with FNM Bank for banking services or alternative council direction.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Before beginning, in an effort to promote transparency and absolute fairness, I will be recusing myself from this item. Thank you, everyone, thank you, Mayor, thank you, thank you, council.
Thank you. We'll wait until Councilmember Mann leaves the room.
Mayor and council, we do have Happy Baines, senior accountant in the Finance Department that will be presenting this item tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, members of the council, members of the city staff, and members of the audience. Item 20 is banking services, resolution approving a contract with FNM Bank for banking services or alternative council direction. So there were background on this item. Current banking services are provided by FNM Bank and are contracted with them since August of 2019. At the May 15th, 2023 city council meeting, council directed city staff to cancel the agreement with FNM Bank, and also city council directed city staff to send a request for proposal for banking services. The RFP was posted on May 18th, 2023 on the city website. RFP was also sent out email to Bank of the West, FNM Bank, JP Morgan, PNC Bank, US Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, West America Bank. Responses were only received from Bank of the West, FNM Bank, and West America Bank. So the RFP evaluators and interviewers, so we had an interview with all three banks, Catherine Shaw Rodriguez, which is the elected city treasurer, myself as senior accountant, and Brad Grant from the Finance Department all participated in the RFP evaluations and also in the interviews. Banks that responded were interviewed at City Hall on July 20th, 2023. Results of the interview and a review of the written responses was done at City Hall on July 26th of 2023. Evaluation criteria, so there was nine different evaluation criterias that we used to rank the banks, so one, number one was conformity to RFP specifications, number two was responsiveness to the RFP, three was comprehensiveness of services provided, four, related experience, five, account analysis, six, conversion plan, seven, charges for services, eight, services for enhancement, and then nine with other factors which were part of the interview process. Results and recommendation by city staff, using their evaluation criteria, FNM Bank scored the highest. Recommendation from city staff, if city council approve a resolution approving a contract with FNM Bank for the banking services. And we do have FNM Bank here, if you guys have any questions for them directly.
Council, are there any questions? Council, are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, before you, do you want to go out to the public or anything before that?
No.
Let's hear from the public if they have anything to say.
Okay.
And I believe we have, FNM is here, but are there any other banking services that are here? Maybe we can hear from them as well.
I'll put it off for citizen comments and anyone can come up. Thank you. Are there any, any public comments in regards to item number 20 on the phone? Hearing none. Any public comment in the chamber? Okay, bringing it back to the dais. I'll, I'll, I'll put it, go ahead. Back out to the chamber.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Hi. I'm Stephanie Denver. I'm with West America Bank. And I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to complete an RFP. Thank you, Happy, for your time and consideration. We were part of the city of Livingston for a long time as far as your banker. We have been here for 30 years in the town, and we love Livingston. It's part of our community. I'm one of the region managers, so I cover this area among many others, but this is one of the cities that I also cover. I support Charlie, among others. I came, like I said, to the RFP to meet Happy and Brad and Kathleen, and it was a fun process. We enjoyed it. We enjoyed looking at the different things that you may be interested in and what Happy presented to us. And, you know, it does come down to a lot of things, but we definitely want to bring up the fact that we are right here locally. We provide jobs to local citizens when they're coming to work for us at the bank. We provide services and want to be part of the community and partner with you. We want to keep your taxpayers' money local within the city and the services here within the city. We want to be able to partner, partner with you going forward with anything that you may have that you want to come to us for. And however we can work with you, we would love to try to do that. And there's a lot of things, I'm sure, out there. And anytime you're dealing with a municipality, not, not one is the same. We have numerous municipalities, and none of them are structured the same. It depends on how the city manager runs it, and we will have multiple different contracts set up because none of them will ever look exactly the same. So we deal with numerous, and for example, you know, the state of California, they allow us to be 107 banks who are life participating, just simply because we partner with them. So there's things that go on that aren't always exactly the same from one bank to another. And I'm sure FNM has wonderful, you know, things, products and services, absolutely. But of course, we always want the opportunity to give you something comparable. So if you want us to try to look at that, we have no idea what they offer. We don't know that, but we're more than happy. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Moran. Let's hold it. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to bring the city account back to Livingston. My name is Sukraj Singh, and I'm the branch manager right across the street over here from you guys. Most of you guys know me as Charlie. I've lived in Livingston for 35 years, and I know pretty much all of you guys up here. In 2019, the city decided to move its banking relationship from West America. Although the city had no accounts with us, and Happy can attest to this, I still continue to provide banking services and change orders to the city and the staff to keep this relationship alive and going. I'm not sure what caused the city to leave in the past, but maybe management. But I'm here to tell you today that I'm the manager this time around, and I'm available to city and staff at any time, even after business hours. As a member of this community, I would like to see our Livingston taxpayers' money housed back in Livingston. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional public comments in regards to this item? Please come up to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. Barbara Ratsliff. I've been here, of course you all know, for 100 years, and I was up there at some time. But that building across the street has been here forever, and I've dealt with West America through business, through pleasure, and for whatever. And they're, they're very, very, it's a good business to deal with as far as I'm concerned. And I hope that we can deal with them as a city because it's home, and that's the way I feel to deal with people that are here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments in regards to this item? Okay, seeing none. Bringing it back to the dais. Council, questions, comments, suggestions, recommendations, motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First of all, do we have representatives from FNM? I see one, but do we have, do they wish to state anything beyond what's in the package already? I mean, West America got up, I mean, I want to make sure that you have the same opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you. If I may, Gary Erickson, FNM Bank.
I'm sorry, your name again?
Gary Erickson.
Okay.
I'd be the market manager for the Turlock, Merced, and kind of anything in between that area. Born and raised here, I can remember when there was rumble strips out on 99 coming into the old last stop, right? We all remember that. FNM Bank, we just want to say thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Last four years, I think, city management has, has seen the way FNM operates. Recently, FNM Bank was ranked as the number one bank, not in California, but in the nation. So it's a pretty good shop, and we're very proud of what we do. We do a lot of business with your farmers and, and businesses all, all in the town here, Livingston. And thank you for the opportunity, the last four years, and the opportunity with the RFP. And I think we've responded to that. If there was any questions, would gladly entertain any of those questions that anybody has with regard to FNM Bank, but just want to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity the last four years, and we look forward to continuing that relationship going forward.
Okay, thank you. I still have the, I have the chair. For me, Mr. Erickson?
Yes, sir.
Back when, 2019, when the city made the decision to move his services, banking services to FNM, I was sitting right there where that, the mayor is at the time, is now. At that time, one of my deciding factors to move away from our local branch that was here was to foster competition because our citizens were asking for another local branch.
Yes, sir.
I was given a promise by your folks that you would have a local branch open. I have not seen a local branch open. I have not seen, I have not even seen an ATM here. So tell me why I should continue to take away from a local business that spends its resources, hires local employees, that invests in our community way beyond a fee that you collect from us, and, and I have no complaints whatsoever about the service. I've spoken with our staff. They have no complaints about the service.
Yes, sir.
But I have also spoken with our staff back in 2019. There was no complaints about the service we were getting from, at that time, West America. My deciding factor, and they're telling me why that FNM did not hold his word to me or to the city and not open, and why we should give you, continue to give you the same chance.
Yeah. Thanks for the opportunity to respond to that. Great question. Great question. I was in the room just like you. I think I was on this side as well, but regardless, was in the room as, as well, councilman. Not only were words said along that line, they were actually in your agenda. So we don't have to say, well, what was said? What were the exact words that were said? I'm not sure with technology, do we have the, the tape that was, was there? But in the agenda that evening, if, if, I would like to read it if I may. It was on pages 195 through 198 of the agenda. Excuse me. From August 20th of 2019. You were in the room, absolutely. Have it in my notes. The agenda on that page says, "FNM Bank is committed to locating a branch in Livingston. Assuming we can find suitable level ground location," most of it's level here, that obviously is not a challenge for us, "with easy ingress, egress, adequate parking, good visibility, and located in a commercial/business zone. We would also prefer location with capability to provide drive-up services for the community." Those are the exact words that were in your agenda for that evening. To my knowledge, how many vaults are located? This is what I asked when, during a RFP project, process. How many vaults are located within the city of Livingston?
Vaults, I'm sorry.
A vault, a, a bank vault where you keep large amounts of cash and such.
Well, I don't know, but we did and used to have a bank. I don't know if they had a vault or not, but obviously you're not gonna find a bank that was, a business that was, a building that was vacated by a bank. There was the beast, there was expectation of the, of the, the business, of the bank getting a building and putting in a vault if that's what's needed.
Yeah.
I mean, nobody said, hey, you have to have a vault, you know? But at that time, and over the years, there's a building that's now a store that used to be a former bank here.
That's right.
It has, it had a drive-up. It had everything available.
Yes, it did.
The only thing had, somebody had to do was put in a vault. And if you can't...
I believe there's also a vault in there if you're speaking about the B and Main Street building. Yes.
Yes. So what I don't understand, there was a building available at that time. There was, up until recently...
There, there, it was for lease, yes. And it was, it was even as early as recently as February this year, it was available.
I don't understand why that was never moved forward. It's not like something wasn't available for you guys. It was in a commercial area. It was downtown. There's a bank that exists right now.
Yep.
That was a couple of blocks away.
Yes.
So I don't understand why that was never moved to where you said that, you know? I, I don't, to me, my only reason was, was to promote a competition, and our folks wanted another banking opportunity. And I relied on just the fact that you said you would open it there to move my vote forward. You know, that's the reason I supported you guys at that time. You broke your promise to me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but you broke your promise. It was done? It was full expectation that you're gonna have a bank open?
If I may respond to that?
Please.
Are you familiar with the landowner of the building at B and Main, sir?
I, I don't need to be. That's not my responsibility.
Well, we are. We are. The, the name is Sun Kim. Their, their name is Sun Kim, live in Alameda. They had a, I guess, a long story to say. They were contacted many times. They were contacted even up until earlier this year, multiple times. Even had other developers that we've, we've spoken with in the town that says they're a, they're a challenge to deal with. But I would like to go back a little bit further because if you remember what was said at the lectern here in August of 2019 from the FNM representative, surely you also remember what was said by the, the competing bank that same evening. And that was when they, they got up here and stood, they, they, and seen, they, part of, part of their presentation was that they wanted to retain your business and commented that, you know, should we not be, granted the business going forward, that perhaps they wouldn't remain in the town. If I'm the next bank standing up here, and you tell me, hey, if you go with FNM Bank, would you put a branch here? Absolutely. If the bank you currently have is going to leave, now I can only have one at B and Main that's available. I have a second branch that's available that has a vault. I have two locations. So to answer your question, did, was there good faith effort? I can show you site plans that were drawn up for the B and Main location. I can show you, we spoke about this in, in, at, at length during the RFP project. I can, I can show you site plans that were filled out for that location. I can, we can point to, I mean, you're here every day. Any other, had somebody come to me here just recently? Have property at 511 Main Street. It's got 25 feet of Main Street frontage. Is that, would that make a good, you can't park two cars in front of it? It's not a good loca, it, it, it won't, you, you can't put a, a drive-up there, you can't put anything there. A location. I guess we could go outside of town and build from scratch. However, you know, what our written word was, I believe we stuck to that written word. Was that available? Did anything else come available in the last four years? We have not found it. Nobody from the city has contacted and says, hey, here's a, we're doing a new development, and here is a wonderful location. We would love to make this a, a, a second financial center for, for the town. That opportunity has not presented itself.
Well, Mr. Erickson?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate what, everything you've said. I'm not sure what the issue was with you, the bank, not you personally, but you and the landlord, the person. I don't know. But since 2019, I believe there was a church that managed to get a lease.
The church was in there in 2019. They were just moving out. I believe it's been vacant. You're talking about the B Street building?
There was, there was other services there, I believe, since then. There's been people in and out of there. Yeah, there were, you know, there was other, other things that came in, went in and out of there. And, and somehow, a, a little mini mart negotiated something that you couldn't. There's a grocery store in there right now.
That's right.
Obviously, if they were able to negotiate something with the landlord, you know, I can simply, if, if I don't really, and, and, and I'm, and I don't want to say that this is true, but if I don't really want to open the branch, I can, you're the landlord, I can say, hey, lease it to me for a dollar a year. Hell, no, I'm not gonna do that. Then you made your, first, you're saying you made your effort. I don't know what the offers were. I don't know. But to me, it was under the anticipation that you would be there, and it was not, hey, that there was a building available. Since then, the fact that you were not able to negotiate is not a concern or the system that I have to, that was, I didn't take that into account that you would not be doing that. Me, when I got there, I voted aye. It was in full expectation that you'll have a bank there. And that was what I was led to believe. And the fact that you were not able to negotiate with the tenant, how does that, what, what do we know that the word is gonna be kept, you know? If they were gonna leave, that's their, you know, that's their decision. Obviously, they're threatening to leave or whatever it was. It didn't weigh heavily on my decision. Well, fine, that's, if that's what, if that's your call, so be it. But it was on the expectation of you guys being there. So, you know, I go by, if I say it, I'm gonna do it.
Yeah.
And, and I took your word, and I voted for you guys. I don't have the same confidence at this point. I don't. So you're saying, you know what, whatever was done in 2019, we set the bank, we're done. We're not gonna do that. You could have built another bank if you wanted to, another building. You could have done something. That, that would have shown your commitment to the community, to the city. You know what? We can't get that building. We're gonna go out and get another one, retrofit or something. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be downtown. We have commercial that extends out. We have a clinic, and we have all those, those are also commercial. In fact, highway access, everything is there. So I don't, I don't get why, if that wasn't there, why you couldn't have built another bank. I mean, you are a very good bank. You built offices everywhere, you have branches everywhere, but not in Livingston where you made a promise to. I'm sorry, but, Mr. Mayor, I, to me, promise me, it was promised, broken. I'm sorry.
Thank you for your, is there anything else?
You know, I would just point back to the written word, I guess, Mr. Mayor. You know, I would just point back to the written word, I guess, Mr. Mayor. What was said that, how we would open up a branch if we could find something that had the adequate services that a bank requires. Hard to put a bank in a gymnasium. Can't put a grocery store in a gas station. We're looking for certain things to build a branch. That's, that's what's made the F and M branch successful for 107 years. And so I appreciate the opportunity to address it though, sir. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, are there any other questions? Comments?
I know this was a conversation that we had when this came to counsel back in May. But I do hear you and I hear the efforts that you made towards coming into Livingston based on the presentation that you made to us in 2019. I also was there. But we, in the conversation that we had on the dais on May 15th, there was written that any verbal agreements that were made, the contract superseded any verbal, anything that was said at the lectern. So I understand where you're coming from, trying to get into Livingston. The, and I haven't met with any of you, but I trust that the finance team and everybody that sat in on that RFP weighed in on and considered everything from everybody that came on that day. A comment that Mr. Counsel Member Samra, the building right over here, what you said is true. The owners are very hard to get a hold of. We've heard that about the whole Liberty development area over here, the Liberty Plaza. But I do recall, maybe December or so, that I, the business that is currently there, that you were present and also Jose were present during that time. So if there were plans on having a bank, I mean, I don't know what, I mean, I was passing by because we're always curious of what businesses are trying to come in and see what's there, but I didn't realize that the two of you would be there having conversations with the business that's currently there. So I don't know what was transpiring during that time. But again, if we want a business like Mr., I'm sorry, I already forgot your name. Erickson had said, maybe we didn't do our job too, to keep asking, well, when are you coming? Because I never reached out to F and M Bank to say that I heard you say that as well, that you would come here because that was one of those factors that the council did weigh in on, that we are looking forward to another bank coming into Livingston. But hearing that you made those efforts, had plans drawn up, that you did your part, even though in the contract it said verbal agreements really didn't matter because of the contracts who preceded it. So I see both points, but thank you for coming tonight and presenting. Thank you, West America as well.
And my comments were largely reduced in a letter with exhibits that were provided to your city financial team during the, shortly after the RFP process. Happy, is that an adequate representation there? Yeah, so I have those exhibits and here's A, B, C of things that, efforts that were made. But thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, while I was hearing this, it reminded me that, I think it's been like two years since I reached out to PD to try and get in touch with those, with the owners from the shopping center to replace those two stop signs that are invisible now at that, right across the the post office and because we cannot replace them because it's not our property, they're responsible. But maybe we just have to do something and replace, I don't know. But anyways, so I thought it was just something that, I thought I was the only one having a hard time getting a hold of them. Anyways, any other comments? So I'm going to open this up for additional public comments. Let me go to the, to the chamber for additional comments. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Just one quick question. The economics driving the banks. You grant me, Atwater is probably twice the size of Livingston. They couldn't survive with a B of A and they closed Chase. B of A only has two ATMs there now. Chase has ATMs. Merced, even bigger. They only have one Wells Fargo. They closed their other branch, was clear the other in the town. Now, what are the economics driving the towns to 15,000? Going to support, I know the citizens want two banks, but a year later, are they going to close it and consolidate it back to somewhere else? Because we don't have that amount of growth. And yes, the B of A that was in Atwater, it had a vault because it was in Save Mart. But they did have a vault. The vault, the one that would chase then Atwater, that is no longer there, had a vault, but they didn't have safe deposit boxes. So I'm not sure in the last three years what's driven that consolidation into the banks. But it is a consideration on the town. How big is that town and can we support? So a year later, they build it and then they close it. That's, would just be a concern of mine, no matter who's thinking of coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Is there any additional comments on the phone? Any additional comments in the chamber? Hearing none, bringing it back to the dais, closing the public comments. Is there any other questions, comments?
No, but Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I made the motion that we approve the contract with West America Bank.
That is, that is not, that is not the resolution on the...
I thought we had alternatives.
Or that will be alternative counsel direction for a future agenda item?
Yeah, to, to form a contract with West America. I'm not sure how I would word it.
So...
Because we do, yeah, I believe and and correct me if I'm wrong, Legal. Counsel, even though staff makes a recommendation, counsel can still make his own call, correct?
That's correct, Mayor Protem. And to answer your first question about the process, it would be to make a motion to reject staff's recommendation and then to direct staff to bring back another item for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion to reject approving the contract with F and M Bank.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, but before we move forward, I just want to say thank you to staff for going through the, doing all this work. I think it's definitely not something that gets done in a few hours and it takes a lot of work. And so please say thank you to everyone that was involved. So there is a motion on the floor and it is to reject, reject the recommendation from staff to approve the contract with F and M Bank. Is there a second on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
So we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Counsel Member Roth?
Yes.
Counsel Member Soto?
No.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
No.
Motion fell by a vote of two-two.
So with that said, this motion is rejected by a vote of three to one?
No, it was a two-two vote, so that means no, no action taken.
So it was two-two, right? Okay, just wanted to clarify. All right, so Legal?
Counsel can put forward an additional motion if it so chooses.
Okay, so I move to approve the resolution approving the contract with F and M Bank for banking services. So there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Counsel Member Roth?
No.
Counsel Member Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
No.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion fell by a vote of...
Motion fell by a vote of two-two.
Legal?
Unfortunately, at this time, Mr. Mayor, it appears to be an inability to come to an agreement on a motion related to the banking item. That counsel can continue to propose alternative motions or move the item for consideration at another time.
I did just want to add one thing, Mayor and counsel. Based on, I think it was the May 15th meeting, Happy, there was a notice of cancellation that was provided to our current bank. So the deadline for that, Happy, when is that contract done and I think it was six-month notice? So if that was issued in June, probably around December, that we would need a decision by counsel because we did provide a cancellation to the current bank. Wanted to get that on the council's radar because we do need those services to operate.
A comment or a question, would there be, would it be an option to send out a request to extend in case additional time is needed? And I don't want to come back in December and say, you know, we don't have no more banking services and we're going to have stay here with the chief and keep our money safe 24 hours a day, so would that, would that be also an option?
It certainly would be something we would talk to with our current bank. Obviously, they have something to say in that as well. But if the council directs us to explore that, then it's certainly something that we could take up, Mayor.
So my way of thinking is that we should consider doing that either way. If we, if we bring an item back and a decision is made before then, then, you know, fine. But at least we have that, that option and not having to make radical decisions just because we're running out of time and continue making mistakes like we have in the past.
Well, I do agree with you that we shouldn't be doing this in a radical move, but there has to be a conclusion to this. So I'm not ready for an open-end agreement either, you know? We, when time expires, counsel has to do his job in getting a new financial service or keep the existing, whatever decision is. But by not making the decision, I don't want this to continue either. There has to be some sort of conclusion to it. Because it is supposed to expire, we made a decision and we need to make a decision. I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel, you know? I'm still very upset about promises made in my mind and it wasn't for that, it could have been said, no, we're not going to do it and it would have been a different decision, but that's fine. And whatever the end date is, we have to have a decision before that. And this will put us, the council notice we need to do something.
Counsel, so we have the opinion of Mayor Protem. Any other comments?
Just want to chime in on that. Counsel Member Samra is a little bit upset with this, but it's not about the emotion. We've, staff has done its job in the RFP process. We've heard from both banks. So with hurt feelings aside, yes, we do have to move forward and make a sound decision, not one based on emotion.
Well, I don't know if it's just purely emotional either, but yes, staff did his job and I value their opinion. But in the end, I can point to other times where counsel has not gone with the recommendation of the staff and made its own decision. And this is no different. And, and we still rely on that staff. I don't know what the reasons were. You know, where West America provided service for years and years, there was never any complaints. I don't see how they can't do the same thing again. So banking services for City Livingston will continue. Most of the same financial staff dealt with both banks already now. They have, and they're familiar with both staffs. And it's right across the street. Turlocks 12 miles away or wherever you look at. And, and I do applaud both, both institutions, but West America has a branch in Atwater and I believe they have two branches in Merced. I don't know how many F and M has, but, you know, they do invest locally in local branches. They do. I think, I don't know, I don't deal with West America that much. But I believe they also have, they probably got branches like everybody else up and down and physical branches, not just ATMs, physical branches. That's an investment in jobs to where a person who does not want to use an ATM or doesn't quite understand can walk up to a bank, a banker and say, hey, I need this.
If I, I'm sorry if I do have to interrupt, but I think we're done discussing the item.
That's fine.
So if we can have direction or no direction at all right now?
So let me, let me ask Legal. This is supposed to expire on December, I believe, correct, or somewhere?
I don't have the exact date, but I think the letter was sent out probably a couple of weeks after that council meeting.
Yeah, and notification of cancellation.
That's correct.
Cancellation. So if you can get that date to the council, I personally feel that we need to make a decision by then.
I would highly recommend that the council make a decision because we have employees that need to be paid. We have expenses, we need operations. I think Happy wanted to chime in on something as well, Mayor. October 26th, that's when, okay, there you go, October 26th.
No, not 180 days. Well, that was at the time, yes. Okay. Then we'll, if the mayor wishes, we can bring it up again at the next one.
So...
If there's any change in thought process.
At this time, I would direct, I would suggest to that we bring this item, same item back at our next council meeting. And then we can go from there. All right. Thank you. That was item number 20. Counsel direction on future, on other future agenda items?
I'd like to see more projects being awarded to go towards our infrastructure because we do have the, if we could also have a general plan update. I, I know a lot of things are in the pipeline for the tax share agreement. And without anything like that or even a future plan for what needs to be done for Livingston so that we can move towards building, but we do need infrastructure before we can decide on many of the things that are, that we would like to see in Livingston. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
And also, if we could bring like an ad hoc, have that discussion about the Fourth of July committee. I don't, I know Mr. Valdez said that they're, they're meeting, but I do know that it's going to involve the manpower from the city of Livingston. So if that could be a possible discussion as well.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, meeting adjourned at 8:45. Thank you and good night.